To order, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilwoman Para, who is the others? Uh, we got called to public, sir.
You have one? I believe you're the mayor's secretary. She's back there if she has any more.
Any more?
No. No?
Okay, uh, call to a public, uh, Mr. Louis Para, would you please come up, uh, state your name and address and, uh, you got three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, council. Good afternoon, Happy New Year. Audience, Happy New Year, good afternoon. My name is Louis Para. I'm a local progress broker and a former candidate for District One Supervisors and Independent. I'm here to address the tentative Code of Conduct. The incidents which compel this consideration for a Code of Conduct are unfortunate. They are highly personal, volatile, and with deep feelings. I am not making light of these matters in any way whatsoever. I reiterate this. Nonetheless, this does not nullify the fact that the incidents at hand are between the residents involved and not the city council, and certainly not the city of Nogales. It is between the councilman and the mirror, the councilmen and the women involved, and finally, the councilman, the women, and Johnny Law. Johnny Law deemed the councilman did not break any laws, and this should be enough for council, period. Councilman Lisha should respect this and stop seizing the opportunity for grandstanding and posturing. Efforts to command a moral high ground, which will be subject to interpretation, will bring more problems than solutions, and will get out of hand quickly. The only actions any councilman should be held to and abide to are those actions while he is on the, he or she is on the dais. The city council has no right to delegate any moral compass on personal matters at all whatsoever. By the council implementing this Code of Conduct, it is going down extremely slippery soap, slope. I'm sure there are more pressing matters at hand. We already have a Code of Conduct for the councilman and for all of society. It is called the Rule of Law. This is pandering and council overreach, period. The endgame of this Code of Conduct is to silence free speech because everything else is covered by Johnny Law. The danger of this Code of Conduct is it can be used strategically for a tool of ambitious, for a strategic tool for an ambitious and power-hungry councilman. Accusations, assumptions, judgments could be easily fostered and executed by a rival council member to the point of public embarrassment. This unfounded public scrutiny is compounded and consequently results on their rival's resignation. Then, the already present nepotism and cronyism comes into play. He drinks. They told me he was passed out drunk, being obnoxious. He says bad words. He's got a bad attitude. He's always fighting. He's rude. He says crude jokes, toxic masculinity, dates too many women, a big flirt. I'm paraphrasing.
Mr. Para?
He has question, pardon me?
Almost, almost done?
No. He has questionable habits and friends, the usual stuff. However, for someone cunning, tactical, and well-versed in bureaucracy and politics, and whose ambition precedes them, this Code of Conduct could be easily used for malicious intents. This could quickly get to the point of disclosing private, personal scenarios.
Mr. Para?
For example,
Excuse me, Mr. Para?
If, may I, may I? There's nobody else, sir. May I, please?
The mayor is...
May I?
Blessing you.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Three minutes.
May I finish public?
The mayor is responsible for the meeting. If the mayor says three minutes, then that's what you're allotted.
Well...
Just make one last comment.
Well, I got, I got one, one, one and a half pages to go. So, we were here, we were here for 20 minutes when Para, the, the, the mining lady came. 29 minutes, we, we listened. You didn't say a word.
Was, was it called to a public? No?
Yes, it was called to a public, sir. It was called to a public. So, please, let me finish. I will proceed.
Would you like an add of order?
However, as I mentioned, for someone cunning, tactical, and well-versed in the bureaucracy of politics, and whose ambition precedes them, this Code of Conduct can be used for malicious intents. This could quickly get to the point of disclosing private and personal matters and scenarios. For example, if they discover that their rival sneaks across for the line for antidepressants and medications, they could expose this. And they could argue that this medicine impairs their judgment and logic, et cetera, et cetera. A complete power move to embarrass and frustrate their rival to the point of them resigning. Please tell me who's gonna run for office, exposing themselves to this possibility of public humiliation and scrutiny. Apparently, this is politics. I understand the present, the premise of this Code of Conduct. It is a novel, kind-hearted, with good intent. I understand. However, please heed my words. Interpret my words. Decipher my words. Read between the lines. It does not behoove the city of Nogales to step up and defend the honor of these women. It is not incumbent for the city of Nogales to establish a policy to defend the honor of these women. Nobody, absolutely no one, nobody, absolutely no one, I got one paragraph left, nobody, absolutely no one, has the right, has the right, nobody... Sir, if you'd be so kind.
I'm trying to...
Nobody, absolutely nobody has the right to live their lives, to live their lives being protected or insulated
Mr. Para?
From insult?
Time's up, please.
Okay, from insult, from offense, or from hurt feeling.
Para, can you stop?
It is an occupational hazard of living in society. And if it's too much to bear...
It will be removed.
Stay indoors.
So, you're done?
Now I am. Any questions?
They're not allowed to respond to call the public. Any questions, public?
Thank you, Mr. Para.
Although the council is allowed to respond to criticism.
Pardon me?
The council is allowed to respond to criticisms under the statutory laws regarding to call the public.
Okay, but I find, I find, and again, that's dark what you do, cutting, cutting people off. There's nobody else here. It's a topic that involves everybody.
We do have it.
That's politics, dark moves.
No, sir, we do have it agenda. Thank you. No more call to a public? Thank you. Presentations. What we'll do is, council will move item number four, because we have them on, on Zoom, to number one, and item number four is fourth annual salute to Nogales Buffalo Soldiers. Ms. Donna Jackson Hudson, would you please take the floor, please?
Hello, can everyone see and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Madonado, council staff and community, past few 2025. On behalf of the Nogales Buffalo Soldier Legacy Association, Michelle and I greatly appreciate the tremendous partnership over the past years to support the annual tribute. For 2025 celebration, we are trying to think different. This will be the first year that we are not having a formal cemetery celebration. As we look back, having two events seem to cut down on the attendance at each event. Therefore, we will have only a tribute at City Hall this year. And the American Legion Post 23, under Councilman Commander Doyle, will announce the names of the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers and ring the bell. It was beautifully done last year. Thank you. Now, I turn it over to Michelle Benson-Hoffer, who is our executive committee member and our historian, and she will talk about her working with David Otopeza from Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor Madonado and council. I worked with David on the layout in front of City Hall, and so we've got everything all set. We know, we really, really appreciate especially all the hard work that Parks and Rec does for us every single year. So, you've made the event easy for us. It has been growing every year, and we really appreciate the honor that you're giving our ancestors. We expect almost 50 high school students in the Ballet Folklorico, in the mariachi, in the band, in ROTC will all be participating. We also heard from the Boy Scouts, who will be helping us as well. And I think that's it. I think that's, we're about ready to, to go.
And afterwards, we're gonna have a reception at the Pimera, also historical museum, where throughout the year, they do have our Buffalo Soldier exhibit. However, this year, February 1st, is the first day that kicks off Black History Month. So, we always do this to represent the Buffalo Soldiers and Black History Month, so this is a great year. This Saturday would be February 1st. So, did David want to say anything?
Any words, Mr. Opeza?
No, I guess we're set. February 1st, starting at 8:00 in the morning in front of City Hall, in front of Memorial, and we will have everything set, and then once we have everything set up, it will go straight to the Buffalo Soldiers and presentation. One day, we met down here and we worked out all the time.
And I mentioned too, one of the exciting things is that we did hear back from several of the principals at the schools. Wade Carpenter from A.J. Mitchell and from Pearson High School. The thing about Carpenter and A.J. Mitchell is that they are both on the grounds of what used to be Camp Little. And I'm not sure if a lot of students are really aware that they're standing on historical ground whenever they go to school. So, it's, it's a great tie-in, and it's a good educational opportunity for the students as well.
Go ahead, Councilman Doyle.
Yes, this is Councilman Doyle and Commander of Post 23, American Legion. I'm all ready and set to go, so looking, looking forward to it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
We call him Johnny, arranger.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, just fill me in. If you guys, you know, I trust on Mr. Opeza and everything he's doing, and I'm pretty sure you guys, you girls are keeping them aware of what the deeds are. So, just let us, you know, help you in what we can, and I think, you know, the whole council will support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to say lastly, is that as we are organizing the 2025 tribute, we are concurrently preparing for our Milestone 2026 Celebration. 2026 is the fifth anniversary of the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers Tribute and the 160th anniversary of the United States Congress establishing the Buffalo Soldiers Regiment in 1866 after the Civil War. So, 2026 is gonna be just very significant, and we thank you so much for your ongoing support.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Young ladies, we appreciate everything, and Happy New Year to you, and, you know, we'll see you here February 1st.
Absolutely. Onward. Thank you.
Before moving on to the, to the awards, I wanted to take a minute, and with all respect, something unfortunately I did forget at the beginning of the meeting. I'd like to everybody stand up and give us a moment of silence for the passing of our president, 39th president, Mr. John, Mr. Jimmy Carter. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we move to presentations. We'll go to awards plaque on the float winners. On the float winners, I wanna do it. We'll go with third place. Third place on the float winners is, goes to Sacred Heart Parish. Next, we go to our second place, Brecker Elementary School.
Bring them up, yes, come on up.
Yes, everybody from Brecker.
Come on, Brecker.
And apparently, we had a title first. So, we had two first-place winners. First is Challenger Elementary School. Thank you, and another first-place winner is Coronado Elementary School. Thank you, and not just to those four winners. I want to congratulate and thank all the participants on the parade, you know. Without all of you guys, the community wouldn't have such a great parade like we did, so I want to thank everybody. Good support in keeping that parade going, you know. I think it gets bigger and bigger and better and better every year, so thank you, everybody. Next, we'll go with, you guys could tell, we, we gave out some, we had Ms. Mireia Morrieta that helped us with the Christmas elves. You know, elves give out the candies. That way, we eliminate all the throwing and all that, and they did a great job. Mrs. Mireia, come on up. I'm not sure how many of her students are here.
All of them.
All of them, okay. All the elves. So, come on up as I name you. Matias Burdais. Bejamín, Bejamín Correa. Diego Morales. Good job, guys. Diego Morales. Good job. Daniel Salazar. Alín Sánchez. You said all of them. Ana Pa, Paula Núñez. Paulina Valenzuela. Felicidades. Felicidades. Ana Sofía Yocupiso. Felicidades. Abriel Morrieta. Okay, no, wait. Valentina Robles. Gracias, mijitas. Luis, Luisana Morales. Gracias, felicidades. And Andrea Parales. Gracias, felicidades. That's a book of the book. These people walked the whole parade, giving out candy to all the spectators, and, you know, they did a great job. So, really appreciate your help and support. You know, keep on doing what you do for the youth. It's a way to show everybody how, you know, working together, we could achieve more, more things. So, thank you. Keep on doing it. Thank you, Mireia.
I want to thank the city of Nogales and all of you, and the mayor, for giving us the opportunity to participate. My kids were very happy to do it. They had a very great experience for them. And the most important thing is that they were able to help their community in a small way, but it was important for them to be part of a bigger thing in that community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, great job. And now, I'd thank, and, you know, everybody went through the judges, everybody walked the parade and everything, we, everybody participated. But we had two great hosting emcees. They did a great job, you know, recognizing everybody as they went through the, in front of the judges, and, you know, I really wanna thank Lisa and Tavo, Mr. Gradías, for, for doing what they did. You know, it takes a lot, lot of knowledge just to know who you're talking about and what schools are there and where they're from. And so, I wanna take this opportunity. I'm gonna kill two birds with one shot. Mr. Gradías will be recognized for his emcee participation, and I will also give him a plaque for his service as a city councilman. Thank you, Mr. Gradías.
Thank you.
Besides, Mr. Gradías, we had Councilwoman Montiel. Thank you for being up, Mr. Gradías, and doing the emcee. Thank you, really appreciate it.
It's always easy when you have someone, someone like Tavo next to you. Thank you, Tavo.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in a budget crunch.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Next, next, we'll move on to number three, Casitas, Ms.
Mayor, if I can just do the, the judges.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Skipping number two. Ms. Councilwoman Montiel, the recognition of the judges, so it helps. We got the judges.
Yeah, that's okay. We wouldn't have winners without judges, right? We all need the judges in this world. I'd like to thank the judges. Every year, we try to get a, a certain amount of judges that are participating here in the community, and I want to thank these six judges that we had. And thank you for your participation and being there at the, at the parade, because I know it's very difficult to try to choose the winners. This year, mayor, you know, first of all, it was the mayor's idea to get the elves. I thought it was just wonderful. This is the second year we have it, right? I think, or the third year. You've been here three years, yeah, and I think it's a great idea. And also, it's a second, okay, second year. So, you know, the parade gets better and better and better. We have 53, I think 53, if I'm correct, or 52 participants that were involved in the parade, so that's great for the community. And I want to thank, start off with Gilberto Toar. Did he make it today? He texted me and he was gonna try to make it, our veteran, Gilberto Toar. Yes. Yeah. And we also had Hilda Martinez. I know she's here. I just saw her. Yeah, she also... And just to be clear, she did not vote on her float. Yes, no conflict of interest. We don't want any allegations here. So, thank you, Hilda, so much. So much.
Thank you very much.
If you could just stay up here. We're going to name a couple of. Yes, yeah. We also have Teresa Godínez. Terry, as I like to call her. Thank you so much, Terry. We also had CBP, Joel Aguirre. Is, did Joel make it today? He said he was going to try, but he said he had a very, very tough night tonight. So I'll make sure we give him his certificate, mayor. Then we also have Marco Leon. Is Marco Leon here today? Okay, he didn't make it today. And Denise Britton. No, okay. I will make sure and ensure that they get their certificates, mayor. But thank you so much, both of you here tonight. Thank you. That's all, mayor.
Thank you. Now, we move to item number three, presenting participants of Casita Navideñas with a certificate of participation. Ms. Melendez.
Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you to every one of you that participated. Every year is getting better. You're being so creative. And then, the next thing, I want to say, I'm sorry for those casitas that were vandalized. There were six casitas that were vandalized three times. I don't know. We don't know who to blame. But next year, we're going to have cameras. Apparently, it was a promise. Yes, so, next year.
And it's on record.
We're not going to have that. Yeah, it's on record. Okay. So first of all, I'm going to say, Lisa, thank you very much, on behalf of the city of Nogales. We also have it for Javier Pintado. I don't think I saw Javier. And then, I gave it to Ranchito Apenitas. I already gave it to them. To the Nogales Women's Club.
I think I saw.
There you are. And your casita was the one that was vandalized twice. So I'm sorry, and next year, we'll take care of that. Thank you very much for all your effort.
Love it. It was fun.
And we have for boys and girls. Could they make it? Thank you very much. Thank you. For the autism group, I think you're going to get the, okay, thank you. They also did a great job. Well, you all did a very good job. The Nogales High School, Ana Vallejo. Not here. Okay. Then, we have another Nogales High School Student Council. And then, for Lurdes Catholic School. It's too cold, that's why. Good excuse. For the Nogales High School Community Club. The Nogales International. Can you take it to them? You're here? Oh. Or whoever. You both, you can both come.
We both this year.
Thank you. For the Community Health Center. The Desert Sky. Pata Perfumes. That was another one that was vandalized three times. Anyway, for Croppers. Not here. Consulado Mexicano, they're here. You were the lucky ones. And for the Cultural Arts, I see nobody. Well, I'll take it. And then, Centro Comunitario Los Nogales. Okay, you're next.
Oh, okay, okay. Next on her list is Terol Strez.
Good.
Yeah, I've got all the bikers here. Congratulations. Great job. Oh, of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We also have Eminem, Family.
Orchard.
Family? The Orchard? It's Family Orchard? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah.
Aniposis there?
Okay. The Family Orchard? Here you go, mi hija. Congratulations. We also have Dentolaser. Okay. Judith Johnson. Dantos Yeska. He's out taking pictures. South Thirty-Two. Nogales Public Library. The director's not here? No? Okay. Here, she is?
No.
Public, oh, of course, you're here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And last but not least, Gear Up. And that run, that, Gear Up? Okay. Well, congratulations, all of you, and thank you for participating.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, again. You know, without all your participation, we wouldn't make that park look so nice. So thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it. Next, we move to item number five, Wildlife Monitoring Along the U.S.-Mexico Border. Emane Hertie.
Thank you, Mayor Maldonado and council. I'm really excited to be here and talk with you all today. Can everyone hear me? Yeah, all right. I work for a nonprofit called Sky Island Alliance. It's based in Tucson. It's been around for thirty-five years, dedicated to the conservation of the lands and waters of our amazing, amazing region. Many of you all know, we live in what's called the Sky Islands. It's this confluence of biogeographical regions. By that, I mean the Sonoran Desert, we all know and love, the Chihuahua Desert, the Sierra Madre Mountains coming up from Mexico, the Rocky Mountains coming down from northern United States, and even a little bit of the Neotropics. What that means is we live in one of the most biologically diverse places on the planet. We are the only place in the world where jaguars and black bears coexist. If anyone's a birder out there, we live in a land with American robins and elegant trogans. We have porcupines and quaddies, ringtails and raccoons. We live in such a cool spot. Saguaro's and Aspens. Could go on and on. We also live in a place where two countries meet. And on this map, on the slide, the red is the outline of what we call the Sky Island Region. And that little black line that goes through the middle is the U.S.-Mexico border wall. This map is a different view, and it shows existing infrastructure along the wall. In reds and oranges, we see the kinds of walls we know here in Nogales, the pedestrian wall, which is eighteen, thirty feet tall. And in blue on that map, we have what's called a vehicle barrier. This is lower, less infrastructure designed to stop vehicles, not so much people. But regardless, what that map shows is that most of this country is bounded by some form of infrastructure. More than sixty percent of the state of Arizona is bounded by a pedestrian wall. And what we're working to do, among many other things, is understand what this means for wildlife. How do wildlife that are so important and local deal with these structures? And so, we use cameras. Many of you may know from hunting or from recreation, motion-activated cameras, like the security cameras you might have in your house. We place these out on the landscape, like this photo here of my coworker Megan, to understand how animals interact with the different structures. Photo on the left is a vehicle barrier. Photo on the right is that pedestrian wall, like we have in and around the city of Nogales. And we also are investigating the impacts of wildlife passages. They added these to the wall, and that's on that right-hand photo, that little opening near my coworker's feet there. These were added after the fact. They're called cat doors, and they're designed to allow animals, like, we don't know, javelina, move through the wall, which otherwise can't. Through the years that we've been monitoring, we've seen a lot of really amazing creatures, like American black bear on the top right. He's crossing from Mexico into the U.S. in this photo. That lower right's hard to see, but that's a mountain lion coming up again from Mexico. We have deer species on the top left, whitetail deer. And on the lower left is also some javelina or collared peccary. You might know these from your backyards on trash day. They come around. But they're an important creature for our landscapes. We've also learned that these small wildlife passages are better than we first thought. They're very small, but they still allow things like bobcats on the left, coyotes on the lower right. And we call this javelina five o'clock traffic on the top right, where entire groups of javelinas come together to try to cross through these small wildlife passages. So, as we're doing this research, we're learning some of the impacts the wall is having on local wildlife. These passages help some, but they're obviously too small for deer species, like this mule deer here, or this American black bear. They're unable to move through the wall. Where we've been publishing these results, we just finished some of this work, and we submitted that earlier in the year. It's out in the public. I can share the results. But our effort to really just understand how things are and what we might be able to do differently in the future to help these species exist and move on the landscape despite the border infrastructure. This figure, it won't really bore you with the details. There's three rows. The bottom row is that vehicle barrier and the take-home message. All those bars are pretty tall. That means that, on average, animals are able to cross pretty freely through those border structures, vehicle barrier. As you go up, the border wall, not much is crossing through. We see really short, little gray bars. That means that most species are unable to cross through the pedestrian walls. That middle row shows pedestrian wall, but with that small, little wildlife passage or cat door, like I mentioned. And we're seeing that for some species, including mountain lion, those passages really make a huge difference. They help these animals move north to south. So they're an important tool for wildlife conservation. And most exciting of all, and something I'm really happy to be here, is this is a map of our cameras now. And you see Nogales on that very lower left of the map. And we've got more than a hundred cameras, most of them east of us, spreading all the way out to Aguaprieta or Douglas on that far right side, for folks who are familiar with that area. But this spring or this winter, we're going to be adding cameras right here close to Nogales. The Santa Cruz River crosses up from Mexico, just to our east. And we'll be working to put some cameras there to monitor wildlife right here in your neighborhood. So we're excited to learn more about the wildlife. This is just a map, a little bit more blown up. City of Nogales on that left side, Grand Avenue coming down, and the Santa Cruz River on the far right of this map. This is roughly where we'll be monitoring wildlife. And we're excited. I'd be happy to come back in seven or eight months or ten months and share with you all what we've learned. Or if there's school groups or teachers out there who'd like to get students involved with this wildlife monitoring, absolutely happy to talk with you all as well, as we look for ways to understand the wildlife of our region. But again, very, very grateful to be here. I'm thankful for Joel for inviting me and for Mayor Maldonado for having me. So thank you all very much.
Hi, to mayor.
Any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very enlightening. I didn't know you had so many cameras on the border. I have one quick question. Is it regulated by the federal government how many cameras you actually can have?
Yeah, that's a really great question. Wildlife cameras are regulated by different agencies. We have research permits for all the cameras we maintain, and it depends on who's managing the land. So we have federal permits for the Forest Service, for example, Bureau of Land Management, and CBP or Customs and Border Protection for those cameras that are really close to the wall.
They don't have a problem you having cameras there? Usually, if our government is a little bit, you know, it's picky about their area there. They have no problem you having cameras there?
No.
That's good to hear.
The border is a contentious place, but we work, we coordinate all our efforts, and they're grateful for the work we do, as it's research on the wildlife of the area.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you for having me.
Is there a specific reason you're concentrating on the east and not the west?
The east versus the west concentration is simply where we've been working in general. The Sky Islands reach the western edge, kind of just to the west of Highway Nineteen. We collaborate with the University of Arizona, who have a project ongoing out at Organ Pipe, which is closer to Saseby. So, not intentional. It was just where we've been working is mostly in the Patagonia Wachuca Mountains, and now we're starting to move westward. But not for any reason other than that's where we've been working, and we're just starting to grow west, which is how we're arriving here at the Santa Cruz River and the city of Nogales area, roughly, and looking for opportunities to keep going.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great job. Have one. Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and certainly, we chatted. We may get a few cameras. We won't be told where the cameras. My mic went out, so I'll just use my own principal's voice. But nevertheless, we may have some cameras on our land, and once we do that, we're going to get an agreement that will follow with the state protocol. Of course, council, I'll share that with mayor and council, so you'll see that we're doing the agreement with Sky Island Alliance. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Okay. Next item, number six, parking meter update. Chey Pimenas.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mr. Kramer, member of the audience. I'm going to give you a brief history of the reasoning behind us proposing a vendor to look at our meters. If you recall, we had a presentation set for the November meeting. Our meters that we have currently are mostly outdated and have become cost, not cost-effective. We are currently replacing them at a rate of at least to twenty to thirty percent per year. So we came to the decision of finding a vendor that will replace these current meters and also be beneficial for the city and the vendor that decides to take on this effort. So we reached out to a vendor called Municipal Parking Services, and they were supposed to provide that presentation in the November meeting. Unfortunately, they didn't contact us, and we had to table it during that time. A request was made by them later on in the month, in early December, that they wanted more information on the revenue that was being generated from these current meters. And that was provided to them, both from the Revenue Department of the city and the city court. They received that information, and once again, we reached out to them, see if they were preparing themselves for a presentation. And at this point, they have not contacted us. So, needless to say, what we believe is happening is they're seeing that it's not something beneficial for their business to take on this effort. So at this point, we decided to reach out to other vendors, and actually, we found a local vendor. I'm not going to name it this time, but this person is showing interest and saying that he's willing to present on the upcoming council meeting and see what he can provide for the city. That's in short. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer if anything comes up.
Are they going to work off a certain percentage of the meters?
That's correct. Most of these companies, they see the win and lose efforts when, because these meters that are being placed, our intentions are followed. are being placed, if our intentions are followed, there's going to be a meter that has cameras and the ability to actually capture any violation and any crime that occurs within that meter, we so need that information. So, they're state-of-the-art meters, and we're hoping to get that in place here within the next six months. And, you know, the revenue sharing, it's really going to be dependent on the agreement that you guys decided with this vendor, and what's beneficial for the city and the vendor.
Is it going to be, you know, credit card and no cash?
I believe it's going to lead to that, where you can either use a credit card of some sort, or you can purchase some type of debit type card from the city to use on the meters. I think it's the best interest to the city to get away from actually using actual currency, in this case, coins, because that's what's actually affecting the meters, because people are actually feeding the meters with currency that is not effective to the meter itself and causing issues.
Councilman Doyle.
In the interest of the public, could you go over, or is it over the free parking on the meters?
Yes, sir. That ended this past Sunday. I mean, on the request of the council, which I appreciate, it's a good gesture. There was no meter enforcement for that timeframe, but it did end this past Sunday. Enforcement has begun again, but once again, you know, we're taking into consideration the fact that some people aren't aware of that, so, you know, we're leaning at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Chief, what is the standard time limit on the meters throughout the cities?
Have you feed it in the city here or other cities?
Other cities, because I know that on some of those meters, it's only two hours, right?
That is correct.
You cannot go over two hours before you get a ticket.
Oh, and this current meters, but the meters that we're hoping to get, where you actually can feed the meter, well, actually not feed the meter, you actually pay for time and actually extend it if you feel that, you know what, I'm not going to make any time for the meter to, it'll expire on me, and actually will generate a sub-parking ticket. So, that's the discussion that we're going to have to have to decide what is the best interest for the city and the enforcement aspect, if we can actually limit it or leave it open to where the meter is consistently paid through, you know, an app, and the person will not get a parking ticket. But that's up into discussion once we get to that point in this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, keep us informed, Mr. Jimenez.
I will.
Appreciate it. Next, we move to item number seven, sidewalk improvement on Patagonia Highway and Frank Reed Road. Mr. Juan Guerra, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, welcome. No elected officials and re-elected officials, thank you. We have worked together, and I'm glad to, we have a good experience as before, so thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Kramer, for asking me to present these updates in the city of Nogales, upgrades in regards to sidewalk and pedestrians improvements. Mr. Kramer asked me to present pictures of the existing conditions, but I wanted to go a little bit farther and explain to you the funding source for this project. This is a very important program in our community that we are lucky to have access to those funding. So I want to run this short video from somebody from the federal government explaining about this grant.
Thank you, sir.
The mobility of people and goods across our nation is vital to our economy. Our highways, roads benefit everyone, whether transporting goods for sale or commuting the road. And while our citizens expect transportation agencies to continue to invest in worthwhile projects, they also expect them to address the ongoing impacts of automobile emissions to public health and the environment. To meet these challenges, some federal funds have been dedicated to transportation projects that are also intended to improve air quality. This funding program is called the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program, or CMAC program. Here, you will learn about CMACs, eligibility requirements, and the typical process for selecting projects for funding. But no law specifies how CMAC program funds are distributed to transportation agencies along with the eligibility criteria that must be used when funding selected projects. Essentially, projects must be related to transportation, demonstrate a reduction in emissions, and located in or benefits an area designated by the Environmental Protection Agency as a non-attainment or maintenance area. This means that the area either does not meet or previously did not meet federal air quality standards, for ozone, carbon monoxide, or particulate matter. Eligible transportation projects generally fall within one of seventeen categories, include activities such as replacing an older diesel vehicle with a newer vehicle, reducing congestion by building high-popularity vehicle lanes, purchasing conditional buses, adding bicycle structures to roads, and installing electric vehicle charging stations. The Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, encourages every transportation agency that administers CMAC program funds to use a transfer process, one that is both written and publicly available for selected eligible projects. To see how a typical project selection process works, let's follow along as the city requests funds for a new sidewalk project to be located in ozone non-attainment area. First, the city contacts the State Department of Transportation, the State DOT, to determine how the CMAC program process works in its state. The city personnel learned that the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, will send out a call for proposed CMAC projects in the fall, and to be considered, the city must submit a proposal. According to the selection process document, all proposals are first screened for eligibility. Then, a subcommittee evaluates eligible proposals and ranks them based on their potential for reducing emissions, overall cost effectiveness, feasibility, along with additional factors. Advanced knowledge of evaluation criteria helps the city develop a compelling proposal for its project to be funded. However, before the city was authorized to proceed with the project, the MPO and State DOT will have to pass a project to their short-term and long-term planning documents as appropriate. We have just seen how CMAC project funds might be used by your agency to reduce emissions included in meeting federal air quality standards. If you have a project in mind or a project to confirm that it meets eligibility requirements are referring to the CMAC program guidance issued by FHWA. The guidance identifies eligible geographic areas, and fully describes allowable and unallowable projects. After your project's eligibility is confirmed, contact your State DOT for information on the application process in your state. Your knowledge about this election process will assist your agency in getting your project funded with CMAC program funds.
Thank you. So that was the summary of the funding source, so the next will be the area that is selected, the non-attainment area in Nogales and Rio Rico. Sorry. Let me... It's next, Jose? Oh, okay. Oops. Okay, this is the recommended area by the Department of Environmental Quality to continue being designated non-attainment area. Unfortunately, we are downstream from Nogales Sonora, and we receive wood burning contaminants, and that's one of the main reasons that city of Nogales and Rio Rico is designated as a non-attainment. And in addition to dust from paved roads. So, with this designation, the federal government provides funding every two years toward the Santa Cruz County and Nogales for dust control abatement. So that's why one of the projects that we selected was sidewalks. Is one of the listed items right there. So we have been lucky to receive funding for two projects so far. So, I just added this page to show you the designation of the particular matters, which is, they put a comparison, just single hair, and just to give you an idea of the size of the particles that we are talking about. So the most important or the most dangerous is the 2.5 size, which is from wood burning and other contaminants. But this issue happens only during nighttime. It's basically during the day, there is not a lot of contamination in the city, so basically it's during night. Next, this is where the new air quality index values, recommended by the Environmental Protection Agency. So before, they had a higher number, which means the city would be not qualified as a non-attainment area, because they were handling a higher value. So they lowered it, and we'll continue being in the loop for further investment or further funding for the community. These are average numbers. As you can see, in the last 10 years, the number that EPA is using as the value to compare if we are in, and meeting that standard or not, is number nine. That is, and as you can see, in the last three years, the city of Nogales and Rio Rico has been a little bit over. Again, these are average numbers, especially at night. So, one of the projects that we recently completed was the sidewalks improvements on Patagonia Highway. At the beginning, the original project was to have a 10-foot pedestrian and bicyclist pathway. Unfortunately, we, the consultant and ADA, discovered a lot of challenges with a lot of restrictions, like the Lourdes School being encroaching into the right of way, we weren't able to make it wider. So at the end, the final determination was to at least construct sidewalks and provide something, a pedestrian pathway for people who use this area and kids going to the school. Due to limited funding, we were unable to totally replace the existing sidewalks on the south side, but we were able to replace the most damaged areas. We replaced new driveways and damaged sidewalks, and we were able to construct brand-new sidewalks on the north side or going to Royal Road. Again, due to limited funding, we had 1.3 million, and according to the latest construction costs, we were unable to complete the whole route. The consultant and ADA recommended to skip one section of this area, which is in front of Las Terrazas Apartments. And then, the other situation that we were recommended to skip was in front of the Lourdes School, and the main reason was because we had a deadline to meet, we had to use the funds by the end of 2024, or we would lose it. So, in order to do the sidewalks in front of the Lourdes, we will be forced to complete environmental and archaeological studies, will take years. And so, we said, let's skip it, and we can come back later with city resources, because when you use federal funding, you have to comply with that. So, we will come back in a later stage. So these are some of the pictures of the recently constructed sidewalk. Again, these are the sections that were completed, and then the next slide is the section that we were unable to do anything at this time, but again, we are planning to come back later on with city resources. The other project that, it changed a little bit, using this type of funds, is, this was the original project that we had in mind a few years ago, to construct a pedestrian pathway along Grand Avenue and on Front Ridge Road, from Grand Avenue up to the high school. Again, unfortunately, I don't know, some of you knows the history of this, Union Pacific owns ADA, I mean, Grand Avenue, they didn't want any pedestrian close to their tracks. And, so we had to change plans and concentrate on Front Ridge. We were very excited that we were able to construct the Front Ridge Road from Grand Avenue up to the high school, but we, ADA, beat it the project, and the lowest bidder was 3 million dollar, and we had only 1.4. So the project was repeated, and we had enough funding to do what we did under the bridge. It's a small segment, but it's a very significant segment, because it required to do something under the I-19, which is something very delicate that we were able to do that, and then now we have a good opening there. Again, we are planning with city resources, come back and complete the project. These two, these slides represents my estimation cost, how much it will cost to us buying the material and completing this project. It will be about 100,000 for those two segments, to construct a 10-foot wide, 2.5 inches of asphalt concrete, over 4 inches of aggregate base. A few years ago, the past administration funded the widening or improvement of Front Ridge, and we were able to shift a little bit the road to accommodate a future pedestrian pathway here. So now we have the room, we just need the money. So you can see, on one of the sites, that the rain is ready for the construction. So, we have the equipment, we have very skilled personnel. What I'm planning to do is, in the next fiscal year, is assign funds for this. Any questions so far?
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Guerra, you said we spent 1.4 million on the part underneath the I-19 bridge?
Yeah, what happened is that, I guess, the consultant who was selected by ADA to do the design, they spent about two years dealing with Union Pacific, and they did preliminary drawings and meetings, and so the consultant exhausted the money designated for the whole project, and they said, we cannot continue. And then... And then they requested a change order for doing the the new design of Front Ridge. That was about the engineering cost was about 500,000. And from the 1.5 million that we had, we will only 1 million was left for the for the construction of this section. The lowest bidder was 700,000 for the construction of the retaining wall and everything. Ada used to put a lot of contingencies within their budgets. So they rounded to 1 million dollars. The City of Nogales for both of the projects put about 100,000 for each of the projects.
Do we have any money left over from that project?
We cannot use it, but we'll get a reimbursement in case of once they totally close the project. If they see that there is a remaining fund, they will reimburse the city whatever is.
As you said, it's going to take like $100,000 to complete the whole project?
Yeah.
From the high school all the way down to
Yeah.
to the bridge?
Yes, the materials. We I'm not counting for the labor and equipment.
You would do it in-house, you said, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Rodeo.
Mr. Gerra, when you say that you could use city city resources, we can't use her funds for this project, right?
Yes, we can.
We can?
Yeah.
Okay, so where do you actually plan on getting the funding from? Strictly her for Colonia CDBG?
Strictly her. Yeah, we can apply for CDBG funds as well, but it will take a little bit longer. But it is we can also apply for CDBG funds in the next cycle, which is in the next two years.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Doro.
Yes, Mr. Gerra, who was this consultant that took in all the money? When they've already done work 10 years ago, they already paid consultant fees, they already went before the railroad company and they redid that. Not against spending more money on consulting fees?
Yeah, what happened is that during that those two years that I'm talking about, they use a lot of resources, a lot of meetings with Union Pacific, with all the different agencies involved, like Santa Cruz County. So they, at the beginning, they charged, I guess, 350,000 for the whole project. But once they were done with after two years, they said, okay, if you want me to continue working, I need more money. And then we normally these projects are handled and administered by Ada. So they select a consultant. We don't have to do anything with that.
Okay. The other question is, on the work that you're doing with the sidewalks on on the east side. Now, as you're laying those sidewalks, is it the city that's doing the work or is it Ada?
Where do you mean on Patagonia Highway?
Yes.
No, it was a consultant hired by the contractor hired by.
Okay, so your job would have been to make sure that that any connections that are existing there already that are going to be covered by new concrete, that you check the meters and everything, make sure that everything was in order so they won't have to dig them out again and break the cement or I don't know.
Yeah.
How does that? How did?
Yeah, yeah, that's I like that question because we have aging water meters. It might be. It might be that we we could have a water leak. Unfortunately, if we replace the water meters first, it will delay the project and and it will have to. I didn't want to wait. So to replace and then we don't have the money to replace all the water meters along.
So so this was like a shortcoming that wasn't planned out with time or anything like that?
It was planned, but the thing is that the the replacement in that area is, first of all, requires a lot of traffic control and investment and in addition to the to the replacement of the services. So I guess we have not seen frequent water leaks in that area, but with the construction with heavy equipment and things that we experienced some of the some water leaks and our city could went quickly and repaired. Yeah. And then now we have traffic rated water meter boxes, which are stronger and and support more weights. So which is and then wherever was possible, we put the water meters outside the pedestrian pathways.
So like that you mark for future, anything that might have you might have not covered at this time because of being in that rush, but yet that you can come back to and
Yeah.
reject after the project?
Right. Case by case, it's it's better to do it in that way, in my opinion, than than extending the or losing the funds from federal government.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Miss Montiel?
I just want to say thank you because I know that a lot of residents on Patagonia, I'm a resident in Asuna Vicenciano, so I drive usually down there on an everyday basis. But I know a lot of residents that live in that area are very related about getting sidewalks. It was, I mean, it was a long time that they've been waiting for that. So it's nice to drive down and see people walking also on a sidewalk. So thank you for having that done. And hopefully, with a new budget coming up, we can work it out where we could finish some of those projects, especially the one that Mr. Bohorkis is referring to, the sidewalk going towards the high school. Because it's such a safety issue there. So but thank you. Good job.
You're welcome. And then just to let you know, I have received numerous phone calls from residents in the area. They would like to see sidewalks on the other side. At least without one side down. Just something additional to add, we will start very soon, maybe in the next 10 days, the sidewalks on Grand Avenue, the second phase.
Which is from MBD all the way to BS market.
BS, correct.
Yes. Appreciate it, Juan.
That is with a local contractor.
Yes. And the other one is, you know, for a little bit more on the on the reason Juan picked in front of Lourdes and all that, the wall for Lourdes is considered historical. And, you know, that's what he was saying. If if the state would to in order for the state to work in front of that, they would have to do a bunch of, you know,
Studies.
studies and all that. So that's why Juan picked to hold off on that and continue with the project. Yes, Mr. Ronea?
Mr. Gerra, on those $100,000 that Councilman Bohorkis asked you about to buy the material, do we currently have those funds? Because if we wait, I guarantee you, we wait till next budget, that's not going to be at 100,000. It's probably going to be, what, 120, 130, perhaps a week?
We we might have a little bit of reserve in the in the here funding. And basically, what we have is we set aside money for application for grants, the matching funds to have it ready in case of we receive a grant. So we could use part of those city funds for for grants that we might not receive. But it's up to Mayor and Council to decide if in case of we receive the grant, be aware that we need to have the matching funds.
And would we have where to store that that material? Do we have, I guess, warehouse space?
Yeah. And in another subject similar to that is that we have a list of projects already that we'll start very active in the next few weeks. So we might not have the time to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Gerra. Great job. Now we move to item number five, financial monthly report. Number one, November 2024 financial report. This could be your 2024 Dust 25 Finance. Ms. Jean?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Please excuse my voice. I'm not contagious. It just hurts to talk a little, but I'm okay. In front of you, you have your November of 24 financials. So through November, we should be budget-wise at about 41.65%. So if you look at your Table A, this is our general fund. We have brought in 13,552,485, which is 49%. Also on Table A, you will see our shared revenues, which we have brought in 4,102,109, which is 42%. You'll see on the expenditure side on Table A that we have expended out 13,613,453, which is 36%. If you move on to Table B, this is our sales tax. So for November, we deposited in our bank 1,218,685. That is 488,781 less than the previous year. But we are still 664,858 over the whole year of the year before. If you move on to Table C, this is the breakdown of each of the general fund departments. The ones in blue are still over the 41.65%. Most of it still, since we're not quite halfway, is those beginning of the year contracts, the large payments we made at the beginning that actually go over for the entire year. You'll start to see those numbers equalling out soon. If you move on to Table D, this is our HERF and our overweight. For HERF, we have collected 1,299,846, which is 50%. And for overweight fees, we have collected 122,044, which is 41%. If you look at the expenditures, we have expended out for HERF 1,633,111, which is 44%. And we have not expended anything out in our overweight fees yet. Moving on to Table E, this is our sewer fund. In our sewer fund, we have collected 1,318,159, which is 43%. And we have expended out 782,966, which is 33%. Moving on to Table F, we have collected 1 million, oh, this is our water account, sorry, water accounts, table F, 1,483,949, which is 41%. And expended out 2,072,685, which is 45%. The final table is Table G, and that's sanitation. We have collected 1,052,576, which is 37%. And we have expended out 1,223,057, which is 32%. Are there any questions on those charts?
Go ahead, Mr. Ronea.
Jean, you know, looking at these numbers, is there any way that you can sort of make a prediction or educated guess as far as for the next budget? Where are our our enterprise funds going to be? Are we going to be able to budget? To balance out the budget for our enterprise funds? As far as what we're what we're collecting and what we're spending, are we headed down a path where come next next budget sessions? Are we going to be able to budget? That's my concern right now. Although it looks I've had, if we look at, I mean, it doesn't look like we have an actual problem, but we I I know we have a problem. And I know it's going to come crashing on our next budget meeting that we have. So do you think it's a it's going to be okay or?
Just this is my opinion, based on the years that I've been here. If our expenditures were just expenditures and we never had an emergency or a capital item that needed to be purchased, we might might be okay. I don't want to say we will because I don't have a crystal ball. But we all know that we can't, that our trucks break down, our water pipes burst, our sewer lines leak. And those are things that we still have to pay for. As is, I've been working with Mr. Barsonus. We have reduced a lot of his expenditures, a few of his, like especially water. That one is down to bare bones. This year, it's bare bones. We talked about that one in the budget meetings, that it's bare bones. And it's going to have to continue that way. We are working on the rate study. I know that our, I know you're not our normal attorney, but our the gentleman, the company that we're working with, has reached out. It took them a while to get a response back, but now the attorney has responded. So they are now starting the process forward again with the rate study. I'm hoping in the next month, we'll know exactly where our numbers stand and they can present it to you all. And that would be for water, sewer, and sanitation.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this part of the report?
Jean, you know, my, you know, me looking at it is, you know, I see waters with unexpensive have over 588. However, on shore, we have plus 535. And then on on sanitation, we're again minus 170. So it's around 220, 230 in the negative right now.
It is. And one thing we have to.
I see it that every, you know, every month it fluctuates, but it's not as bad as people think also.
Right. And with our water account, we have to remember that that July 1 is when we make that huge payment to the bonds. So we'd see that as a negative from the start. And as the months continue.
You recuperate.
It looks better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that part?
Councilwoman Montiel?
Mr. Kramer, I know we're working on the water study, the water rate study. But also, we look at all this, for example, the 133 delinquent accounts. Okay. And I know we can't do much about it because you can't turn off the sewer, you know, you can't. So there's an amount of 365,000 approximately. And it, you know, it's pretty stable, you know, we 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 can't charge the, I guess, I don't know if they're charging or not. We never really have a report about that. I think legal's working on it, but my question still remains. I mean, we are owed 365,000 to the City of Nogales, right? There's 133 accounts. So I would like to also address that, you know, we want to increase if the water rates come back, the the report comes back, study saying that, you know, the the water rate should increase due to different factors. But we don't know what those factors are. But there is, I mean, 365,000 that is owed to the City of Nogales. So until we, you know, that we address that too. And I know we keep saying, well, we can't turn off the sewer. We know that. But there's other ways that we should address it. I mean, we're very good to charge people for water. Yeah, if I'm late, I get a late, they turn off my water. So we ought to address that. We really do. We need to address it and not by we can't turn off the sewer. But so it's just something to think about. That should be factored into like, let's take care of the existing issue we have right now that these accounts are delinquent. That's just a food for thought. So I think it's very important to address that too.
Yes, we certainly we've we've talked about this. And so we were going to wait for this study and we were going to, I think we chatted about by the end of February, we're going to revisit this, exactly what you're saying. I believe Jean and I did talk about that.
And we have been sending letters out to all of Book 31. We have three books that are included in this 133 delinquents. Letters have gone out to all of Book 31. And we've actually got a pretty good response back from people. Some people didn't realize that they had sewer with the city and were quite shocked when they got a letter. Other ones try to claim they don't live there, but then we discovered that they do and they made arrangements. So quite a few of them now have moved into a contract with us where they're paying us monthly. Book 32 and 33 are our next ones that we're going to start hitting. And our revenue is doing a really good job of when somebody from one of our sewer accounts calls in, that they explain exactly, well, we can't shut off your sewer. It's a health issue if we try to
Yeah.
do something. And it's been trying to educate them on the difference between a water account and just a sewer account. So the revenue's been really good about trying to educate those three books of business.
Well, I'm sure these people that owe this money are pretty educated, knowing they owe the money. Believe me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they do know. So so but what we need to do is So, so, but what we need to do is, I, I looked back when you gave us this report, cuz we get, just for the public to know, we get it online, we look at it, and when I was looking into like the, the, like, there's a pattern and it doesn't really decrease. I mean, there's maybe two or three delinquent accounts get paid off, but it's the same uh number, you know, pretty much.
About the same people.
Yeah, so when you say, you know, they're getting educated, well, they know they owe the money. But there's, they also do know that there's not much that we're doing about it. That's the problem.
Exactly, that is the problem.
If we're gonna charge people in the future um and increase the water rates, we need to address what people are, um, these, these accounts. There's, it's one hundred and thirty-three accounts that owe this money to the city in Nogales.
And I agree with you on-
So there's gotta be, we gotta think outside the box and we gotta start thinking about not just, we can't turn off the sewer, cuz we hear it all the time. So it's like, what are we gonna address? And we have good lawyers and they can maybe come up with a good plan. I don't know the legal part of it, I don't know if you could put a lien on a house, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but I'm sure they, they have answers to all of this. Thank you, thank you.
Jean, Jean, one question. Uh, paragraph two, where you say thirty-six accounts are on contract, is this that part of the one thirty-three?
No, so that thirty-six you have there, that is part of our fifty-two active water accounts that are under contract. Uh, wait, wait, let me read the paragraph.
No, cuz it's by verde.
We have fifty-two total contracts, the thirty-six are the sewer contracts. I combined the two paragraphs together, sorry. So yes, thirty-six of those um are contracted. And so those thirty-six are not included in that one thirty-three, because they have contacted us, they are making payments on their accounts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, uh.
Yeah, to follow up with what Ms. Montiel said, certainly with, and you said the word lien. And there's certainly a pathway that we will discuss and certainly with our attorney sitting next to my left, certainly we were conversing a bit, but there's certainly a, a legal pathway that we probably are not implementing, that we should be doing. So it's another pathway to what we're looking at and some, especially some of the people that are higher up as far as what they owe. So we'll certainly get back to you on that as counsel of what we're going to do as far as what legal will suggest for us to help with this.
Yes, and we have gone to legal with some of our, the bigger ones, like some of the businesses. Um, and some of them have turned around then and started paying those off. Some of them are, are quite large, we're talking ten, fifteen thousand dollars, that has, it's never been- Yes, so we are working on some of those and, and Legal does have a few of them in their hopper that they're currently working on.
Thank you.
Um, are there any more questions on that part?
Any more questions? You're gonna move to number two?
Yes, um, so you guys did receive by electronic version the, the
Yes.
expenses from, so we'll continue to do that electronically. If you have any questions on any of those checks, please always just reach out to me. Um, the second little part of my presentation is a slideshow. You have the um, a hard copy on your desks with you. So this is gonna kinda just keep you guys up to date as to where we're standing. Um, we know that we've had a utility billing issue the last few months. Um, the Nogales International has put a, an article in the newspaper, so more people were aware. Um, we had double charges to accounts. What happened was one of our third parties who does our billing and one of our, then our bank, the other third party, when it came across, it came across wrong twice. The bank pulled the money from our customers, a certain amount of customers, not all of them, twice. Um, we did not know it happened the second time until the customer started contacting us, cuz we weren't told by the bank that we got the money. So approximately, it was about point three percent of our entire book of business, this double charge affected. There have been a couple more that have come out in the past week. Um, so we're probably at point three-five percent of our entire book. This only affected accounts that were set up on our side through checking accounts. If somebody sets it up on their side through their bank with a credit card, this did not affect them. It was only the automatic withdrawals that came from our side. So I, I know that that was an issue with a few people and we kinda set them straight to start. Um, there was approximately about fifty accounts at this point that were affected. Um, there could be a few more, but we are trying to deal with each account on an individual basis. We are going through their history, we're going through everything we can, and we're reaching out to them on an individual, like, this is what we see, or they contact us and say, this is what my bank shows. And we deal with them individually. Some people disputed with their bank right away and they were given their reimbursement right away, so we never even knew that for them it was affected. So we never, like I said, we didn't know from the bank the second time, so they weren't even on the list when we finally got something from the bank. We have reached out and sent twenty to twenty-five refund checks to other customers. Um, and there may be more that come forward in this next billing cycle. And as, like I said, as it happens, we're gonna deal with each customer individually. There's also some late billing cycles throughout the fall. We have meter readers who read all fifty books monthly. Um, the books are read, they're returned to revenue, revenue inputs them in the system, those get sent over to the third party that creates the bill and the bills get mailed out or emailed out. Um, when they're turned in late, which they were, October was the big month, but throughout August and September, it kinda built and the books were late. So if the books come to us late, then the bills are created late. And so that was our second issue with this entire billing cycle issue. Um, some people are now starting to get bills that have two months on it, cuz we're trying to catch up. Um, with, if somebody does have one that's, has two months on it and they are somebody who can't afford two months, um, they're on a very low income, if they let us know, we can spread it out for them. We are very willing to work with our customers in whatever way makes it best for them. Um, at this point, we have not pulled any further money from anybody's account since September. Um, because we're trying to get everybody caught up so that we didn't, we're not trying to pull like, let's say, five hundred dollars from one person's account when they normally only owed maybe a hundred and fifty. We don't want that to happen. Um, we are having quite a few people come in and call in, email me, and we're working with them to get it all squared away. They did use my um water account as the Guinea pig account. So I saw a lot of this didn't work, this worked, this didn't work, this didn't work. So I told them, I said, if you're gonna use anybody's, use mine, cuz then we can track it. And so that's the account that Revenue has used between the two third parties um to make sure that the issue works. We did work, like I said, between ENCODE and the bank, multiple trials, multiple errors, multiple, I mean, even Mr. Kramer was on the phone with um ENCODE at one point. And it looks like that part is now squared away. Um, but like I keep saying, we're, we're working with everybody individually. We have sixty-one hundred accounts. Um, and so it's taken us some time to get through them, but we would rather have it done correctly and deal with each person individually than try to think that we cur- we fix it and then realize we created a bigger problem. Of course, if anybody at all has concerns, they can always call City Hall here to Revenue and they can also email me. Um, I've been emailing with a lot of people lately. Um, on any accounts that we know are affected, they will not be shut off. We will not shut off any water service on an account that we know is affected. If it's an account that we're not, didn't know that it's been affected and they contact us, we won't shut their water off. Um, and I just wanna tell everybody, especially the community, thank you um for understanding through this whole issue. It has been lengthy, um, we are working through it. It takes some time, I have a very small little group in there and, but they're doing the best that they can to, to get through all these accounts. I did mail out letters. Um, based on the meeting that we had in December, um, I was asked to mail out letters. We mailed out a little over five thousand letters by post office. Um, they went out between December ninth and December seventeenth. I did receive a phone call today that a lady received hers in her mailbox today. So, and hers was actually dated like the ninth or the tenth. Hers was one of the first letters that went out and she received it today. So if you have not received your letter, it's possible, it will get to you still. Um, we also can email the letter if anybody wants a copy of it. And we will have copies out here available um from our Revenue people, if anybody wants to swing by and receive a copy. It is in English and in Spanish, so we kinda hit everybody. Um, it took about five or six of us within the finance department to process it, do the envelopes, do the paper and the postage. So it did cost us about thirty-five hundred dollars to mail out all the letters, but we mailed them out. This is just a copy of the letter that went out. Might be a little hard to read, it's a little small, but I wanted to get the letter on there so you guys could just see that it did go out. Um, we did a major mail merge from every single book. Um, of course, we didn't send them to ourselves for our hundreds of accounts. We sent one to the school district instead of all of their accounts. And if the system caught that people had multiple accounts, we sent them one letter instead of multiple letters of the exact same letter. Are there any questions?
Mr. Vornas.
Uh, Jean, more than anything, it's not a question, I just really, uh, the people that have called me um, and I've sent them over to, to you, um, I wanna congratulate you and your team because you have actually fixed a problem for them almost instantly, within a few minutes. Uh, they've come here and they, you've been very, uh, you've been, you've given them access. Uh, and that's, that was one of the biggest issues that we were having, that they felt that uh, they, the city was not listening to them. So uh, when we started tackling this issue, um, and you told us, well, just send me an email, shoot me an email or tell them to come here. So as soon as I did that and they started talking to you or someone on your, on your team, uh, they came back and they, and they thanked me and they told me to tell you that, thank you for, for everything that you did for them. Uh, because they were able to sleep, uh, because there's, there's one in particular gentleman that, uh, he really was v- very worried. But um, uh, thank you, Jean, and thank, thank your, your entire team.
I will, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Doe.
Yeah, well, my question is like, uh, it, it's still a process. Uh, basically, I had uh one person tell me that it gets, they got the two-month billing uh this month. Uh, and like I said, I told them they're working through it. Is that gonna continue where, to next month, where people are gonna be getting two months uh?
We sure hope not. My crystal ball, but no, we're hoping it doesn't. We're hoping that what happens in January is the end of trying to make it all up. And by the time the February bills roll around, that we are back on schedule and back on track. But if anybody, you know, like I tell everybody, if anybody reaches out to you, please send them my direction. I have met with more people, um, I've met more people within Nogales than I've ever known in, in the past two months. Um, they've sat in my office, we've cried together, we've laughed together, they yelled at me and then they're okay afterwards. Um, so it's, it was a long process, but, but there is a light at the end of the tunnel, we do see it.
Yeah, and in this situation, I guess they got two billings in the same month, this, um, this month of December, one of-
There were.
Middle and one at the end. And the, at the second one was already the, again, they hadn't paid the, the first billing which came-
So the, the first billing was more of November's billing,
Right.
even though it had a December date. And then the December bill that came was, would have been their normal bill, but it included the past due of November. None of those accounts will have the past due charges, won't have, they won't be cut off. Um, all of those are, they're all flagged. And um, but if anybody, you know, they see that bill and they have a question, please let me know.
Just let them know that there's a process going-
Yeah, and then have them, have them come see me.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I guess, uh, well, you, you're not sure when they're gonna resolve the whole thing.
I'm hoping so.
But, but I did wanna say a word about, you know, it does happen where the month of December, maybe that, that person got, that was supposed to get that billing way back then. Now, the postal service does, been doing a pretty good job, it's just that sometimes with all the other extra things that come in December. And, and mostly when something like that happens, a letter like that might get misdelivered somewhere where
It could.
they have those neighborhood boxes and maybe nobody's there. And then by the time the carrier checks uh two weeks down the road or something and sees the mail's not being picked up, he takes it back and then he might see that they misdelivered that one.
Right.
So that, then they put it back in the system, you know, the, so things like that do happen, it's human error. Uh, especially in that month of December where uh they're overcome more by more work that they have. I just thought I mentioned that, cuz I, I worked thirty-five years there.
No wonder you know so much.
Thank you for the mailman experience.
And of the five thousand that went out, we only received about twenty-five back that said that they were not deliverable. And we've already reached out to those twenty-five and corrected our mailing addresses in our systems and they've gone right back out the door.
Thank you. Anybody else? Montiel?
Mr. Kramer, I just, yeah, I just wanna say thank you to all of you, but I know it was an issue that was addressed very quickly, cuz I know it started in September. And I know you weren't here, um, I'm not blaming you. But you addressed it really well, you didn't find excuses on, on, you know, how, why did this happen or, or that type of thing. But I wanna say thanks because once you recognize it was a problem, you addressed it right away and you came up with a solution. I mean, that was exactly what I think the residents expected, we expected as, as sitting here in the dais. Um, and I think it's been addressed. I like the idea that you had about sending a letter to the international um, and putting on the website and addressing it. That was very proactive, instead of being reactive and finding uh an excuse, cuz it was city, the city did not. You know, it was, what I understand from you is something that, it was our error on our side. But you addressed it in a very proactive way, so thank you and, and everybody else that resolved the problem, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Montiel. Yeah, I was the, I found the solutions, but I can say that they, they did the, the legwork of it. Certainly, Jean said, yes, they, it brought on a lot more work, as you can see, more expenses, but it's unfortunate that it was a software issue and what wasn't talking, communicating properly with all facets, be it the banks, be billing, everything to that effect. We hope, as she said, we hope we got it straightened out, we hope it's, we're moving forward with it and, but thank you again. Yes, it was certainly uh something that again, we, hopefully, we don't have that problem. And I know that we had said from the December meeting that I know that we were giving out re, everybody that did get uh, charge, overcharged and everything is getting their refunds. And I've seen a lot, and I'll say this, I mean, I've granted, I'm walking back and forth quite a bit over here. And I will say that seventy to eighty percent of the people have been very receptive. I mean, granted, there, there are times, but I would even probably say eighty to ninety percent have been very receptive. So yes, it was unfortunate incident, but that's what we do. We figure things out and move forward and work together as a team. And thank you, counsel, for understanding that as well, cuz I know that as elected officials, you are getting onslaught with a lot of phone calls, emails, and I know that cuz you shared with them with me as well. Certainly, it, it's good that we work together and thank you for that as well.
And we did all of that while we were stationed here, this was our office for three weeks. So thank you for letting us use your guys' space to be our offices. And if you haven't seen our new floors and desks, please come and visit Finance and HR and MIS, they're in there too.
Thank you.
Any other?
Anything else? Thank you, Jean. Next, we move to this discussion action items. Um, number one, consideration possible action of action item twenty-twenty-five dash one. Primer encuentro, the intercalares FHC, FHC, a bi-national forum of culture, tourism, gastronomy, philanthropy, um, and public policies between mayors of, from the United States and Mexico. Uh, I talked about this a little bit in December. Um, Ms. Maritza, uh, together, would you please come up? Uh, she's the president of uh FHC, which is Fundación Honores y Causa. And can you just uh give the council a little bit of explanation what, what we're trying to do? And, you know, this was a, a great gesture when they invited me, that I went to Guadalajara. And um, and basically, teach the people what the border is. Uh, there, as far, uh, the farther you get to the border, the less they know. So this is uh basically one of the big focus of uh making everybody realize even farther south um, that one, uh, Nogales is a very friendly and workable border. So Maritza, go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, um, members of the council, mayor, leaders of our community- nuestros bomberos de Sonora, bienvenidos, and good evening, everyone. Thank you. Um, my name is Maritza Lee Higuera and I am, um, I proudly serve as the president for the Fundación Honoris Causa USA. It's a nonprofit organization, uh, dedicated to enhance, um, the quality for, um, life Latinos across the United States and its territories. And, um, I am here to share the exciting news of bringing Interalcaldes, the first global bi-national inter-mayor summit and firefighter awards. Um, it will happen on March from the twenty-eighth to the thirtieth. Um, this event presents a significant opportunity for our city not just to celebrate public safety heroes, but to extend Nogales' roles as leadership in fostering bi-national relationships and advising, and advancing cultural, economic, and public safety partnerships. Um, the bi-national inter-mayor summit award ceremony will focus on two things. Fostering bi-national collaborations and to strengthen relationships with Mexico and, um, the United States. Um, Interalcaldes mayors from, um, Guadalajara, Puebla, Ciudad de México, um, Sonora, of course-
Guanajuato.
Guanajuato, Utah, California. And we believe that El Salvador will join us for the first photo of, um, Interalcaldes as well as our fire heroes from the same places. Um, we will be fostering bi-national collaboration and we will be honoring our firefighters. Um, we will also have some trips to our borders, to Mariposa, Deconci. We will highlight, uh, Morley Avenue and their amazing nonprofits organizations that have been working hard in art, in culture, in media. Um, we're gonna have, um, a forum for Interalcaldes, uh, where our mayor and nuestro alcalde Jim de Nogales Sonora will be a great part of the, um, of the forum as well as, um, the Interalcaldes that are coming. We believe right now we have, uh, confirmation for mayors, for twenty of them total. And the list keeps adding to it, so we're very happy about that. Same with our, uh, bomberos, with our firefighters. Um, they're also joining us for, for the summer, the summit. It will be a three-day summit. Uh, we will enhance, um, on our, on our city of Nogales, media coverage, economic boost, uh, community support, cultural enrichment. And, um, I'm here just to make sure that, um, mention how important it's the vision of our city members, how important it's to highlight our city for this, um, for this summit and the success and the partnerships that we will create, um, long-lasting partnerships, long-lasting relationships and, um, our leaders here that are present. Everyone is invited to participate on the summit. Um, we are counting now our local organizations from ambos Nogales, including InfoCulta, uh, Public Safety Global Alliance, Santa Cruz County Public Media, the Winter Museum, Cero Stress Movement, Mariposa Community Health Center, Unisource Energy Service, Nogales International, Santa Cruz County Superintendent's Office, and many more. Um, so, um, your, your leadership, your vo- voices matter and we will love to, for, for all of you to join us on this important event. Um, in conclusion, the summer summit is more than just an event. It's an opportunity to honor our heroes, foster bi-national collaborations, and elevate Nogales as a model of innovation, unity, and leadership. Because that's what we believe, that we have great leaders on our city and our ambos Nogales and within, you know, our public. Um, so I'm extending this invitation to all of you and our, our public for jo- for you all to join us March twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and the thirtieth. Um, I'm here for any questions as well. And if you would like to, um, search a little bit about Fundación Honoris Causa, they have a website and in Facebook you can find them as FHC, um, USA. Thank you.
Thank you, Maritza. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, uh, you know, a little bit going on the, on the events. Um, like I said, Maritza said, on Friday, it's gonna be mostly in Grant, Grant, excuse me, Morley Avenue. And then, um, we'll, we'll host, uh, actually Un Abrazo, uh, at the border, which, Maritza, I had to talk to you afterwards, but it's, it's already been approved by, uh, CBP. Um, and then, uh, basically, you know, it's gonna be a Un Abrazo. Hopefully, we get both, uh, US and cus- uh, Mexican customs there and it's gonna be between, uh, you know, uh, we're getting, you know, even, uh, Diputados, which is, um, senators from Mexico. Hopefully, we could get some, uh, some, uh, you know, senators if, if there's time for them that, that are here in Nogales. Um, we'll have mayors from Mexico with US greeting, uh, at the border. So that, that's on, on the Friday, the twenty-eighth. Then we'll have a, a luncheon at, uh, courthouse. And then, um, on Saturday, we'll, we'll have, uh, again, uh, at the, at the Morley, and then, and we'll do some tours, uh, with Border Patrol and, and, uh, Mariposa, uh, Port. And then we're looking at, uh, having a dinner at Paladuro, which is the main thing on, on this item, where we'll have a dinner and award ceremony up at, uh, Paladuro. Um, you know, basically, the, the dinner will, the foundation is asking for zero funding from the city, just basically in kind. And, um, it's, uh, roughly around two thousand dollars of, of in kind. Um, you know, so, uh, you know, I ask for all the support on, on this great, great opportunity for the city. Uh, anything else? Uh, any questions?
What was the amount of the in kind?
Two thousand. It's, what's that?
Were you voting in this?
Yeah. So with this said, I, do I have a motion? Any remarks or anything? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Maritza. Continue with this.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.
Now, the, uh, number two is discussion, direction and possible action on Buffalo Soldiers Legacy Association in-kind contribution. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? We already heard the presentation. Um, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Number seven. Um, orders. Number one, consideration and possible action of orders twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one dash zero-zero-one. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving sub-grantee agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for a storm guarding grant reallocation in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars in reimbursement for mileage. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number two, consideration and possible action of order twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one dash zero-zero-two. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving a sub-grantee agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for the stone guarding grant reallocation in the amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars in reimbursement overtime. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Now going, uh, to number eight. Uh, move that we go into executive session, executive session on legal advice discussion on consideration, employment, assignment, uh, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salary discrepancy, uh, and resignation of the public office, appointee or employee of a public body, except that within the exception of a salary discussion, an officer appointee or an employee may demand that the discussion or consideration occur in public meeting. ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one dash zero-three. Uh, discuss one, appointee of as, uh, as parks and reg-, uh, director, and appointee of as fire chief. I move to, going to executive session. All in favor? Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be going into executive session. Thank you.
We resume back from executive session. Go direct to number nine discussion items. Number one discussion on possible action mayor and council ratification on appointment as of a park director, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my recommendation to council that you recommend Jessica Valencia Cume for the Parks and Recreation Director's position.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I second the motion.
No, you got to make a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion.
Turn on your mic.
Second. Mr. Pigment's recommendation.
Cume. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you, Mr. Kramer and Ms. Jessica. Welcome to your new appoint as director of Parks and Rec. Item number two discussion possible action mayor and council ratification of the appointment of as chief fire chief.
I will defer to council, Mayor.
Thank you. Put down your mic, please.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint and hire Mr. Kenny LaRiva as a fire chief.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Ms. Salvo, would you please start it?
For the record, no.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes, for the record, yes.
For the record, yes.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
And it's all pass, yea. So five to two.
Five, two.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So Kenny, congratulations. Mr.
Jessica?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Kramer, please go ahead and talk to both of the nominations on getting out contractual things and please inform us of what's going to be the steps.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll make sure that I follow through with the processes of hiring these candidates that you recommended and we'll follow through and follow the protocol with HR guidelines. We'll get back and make sure that everything is done efficiently and professionally and correct.
Thank you. Okay, we go to mayors and council report. Mr. Bonillas?
I'll have to report, Mayor, at this time.
Mr. Doyle, current events?
Well, I guess most of us were there during the Christmas parade and I thought it was a great event. Enjoyed the anticipation, mostly walking in front of the mayor there and heralding you throughout the parade. The people were really excited as we first looked at them and it seemed like it was a great, like always, a great community event. So thank you for that opportunity to participate.
Ms. Valentes?
Well, we're still working with the event that we're going to have February the seventh, Saturday at the gym. It's going to be from eleven to three. It's free of charge, but it's going to be only for seniors. All seniors are invited. We're going to have music, food, and a lot of entertainment. We hope to see you all there, the seniors.
That's February seventh, correct?
February the seventh.
Thank you. Ms. Montiel?
No, I just want to say again, congratulations, Mrs. Parada, for joining us on the dais and joining the team and I wish the best of luck to you. Thank you.
Ms. Parada?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. You know, I'm excited on the, you know, the new event that we're going to have. I think it's going to be a great thing. You know, I participated with Coca-Cola Parade in Orale Sonora. It was great. Merry Posse Care's event, which was also great at the clinic. The Christmas parade, let me tell you, the whole city enjoyed it. The whole city participated. I did not hear of any issues on heavy traffic. You know, PD, you did a great, great job. I did not hear of any issues on heavy traffic, you know, PD did a great, great job. You know, Fire Department did a great job with, with the Santa Claus riding him around. Thank you for all your support in the decoration of the marshal and, and my vehicle. Thank you for all that. You know, we've had some visitors coming down to the port from ABC visitors. You know, the, I missed Ms. Jean, thank, you know, the Mitchell Challenger concert. I heard it was very nice. I really appreciate you guys putting that together. Esther, I know you were at the Posada Comunitaria. I was out of town and could not attend, but thank you for, for doing that with the community down there. The Casitas at Border Patrol, they did a, Casitas at Santa Cruz gave out gifts and all that. Also was a great thing. Maritza with the senior center. You know, thank you for giving out those bags, you know, for, to the seniors and all that, you know. And, you know, I want to ratify that we all got to work together. Gracias bomberos por estar aqui. Este les quiero dar las gracias y espero verlos en el evento el veintiocho y veintinueve de marzo. Se va a tratar de comunicaciones, relaciones, negocios con ambos estados, ciudades y países que las puertas están abiertas. Yo lo he hablado bastante con el alcalde Jim. Queremos abrirle las puertas, no nomás a los que estamos cercas a la frontera, pero también a los que no conocen bien la frontera, como lo de Jalisco, lo de Juana Huato, lo de Veracruz, lo de Michoacán, para que conozcan bien la frontera y pues ustedes hablan su lenguaje, su presencia aquí. Este va a ser muy agradecida para poder, este, darles una buena bienvenida y tenerlos en comunicación. Por eso, aparte de eso, gracias por tomarse su tiempo y estar aquí en esta reunión. That's, that's all I've got. City manager report. Mr. Kramer.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I added this on because I believe that the city manager hasn't had a report in a few years. So I want to just give an update of certainly what, what I'm trying to do in working along with the council. And I want to first say that thank you, Mayor. I know that we changed our motto and I know, believe you get ordered 500 coins to it. I think it's a good motto because it is gateway to Arizona. I think that's very appropriate for what we're trying to do. We're bigger and getting bigger for that matter. As I told the directors, I said, we are going to be the leaders at this point, the city of Nogales. With that, it's certainly important, we are, as I talked to Mr. Bohorkis, I said, get your committee back together because we do have money for billboards to get that out there along our interstates and coming into the city. We are working and thank you to Ms. Montiel and State Senator Gaberon. We had a meeting before, about four weeks ago. I did, had set up a meeting with Anthony Castleman as the ADOT person assigned to this area. I did drive him around into the community of what we chatted on the phone with Ms., Senator Gaberon. I did drive him around to the community and I did take him to our favorite shrimp place for lunch as well. So he enjoyed that. But nevertheless, he stated that yes, they should be more involved from Mariposa Port up to Mariposa and along Mariposa and along Grand Avenue, talking about what we chatted about a little bit and certainly with their putting in better crosswalks, lights for the people that are crossing, especially by the Bowman Center. So right now we don't have an intergovernmental agreement that's been expired since 2016. So we are working on that to get an intergovernmental agreement working with ADOT. DOT chief and I chatted about that and they have been, the fire, the police department has been pretty much managing, especially during the holiday seasons, both ports, especially downtown, especially downtown and the areas where DOT and, and the DOT stated that we do not have an intergovernmental agreement at this time. So we were trying to work on that, certainly getting the police chief involved to actually get things in operations because technically Grand Avenue is considered a state highway and Mariposa where the Nogales Police Department has been honoring it and following through and enforcing policies and, and the rules on that. So we are, I am working on that. I did reach out. The ADOT gentleman is helping me from the state as well, working on that. We are working on the Nogales Wash, where is, is Juan? Juan still here? Yes, we did have a meeting and thank you council members for attending. As some of you have attended to some of these meetings, I certainly will invite up to three because we're not violating open meeting law. You can come with me as three of you and we can certainly attend and the directors know this. We've already had the meetings. I think Juan, you're shaking your head because I think they're very productive. Jean, the same thing, correct? And that's what my goal is to get the communication with you, with them, so we know everyone's working together. South thirty-two meeting, certainly, Mayor, you've been involved in a lot of that. Garrett Workman is their person that he will, from this point forward will come as if we want him monthly. But once they start doing the construction, they will give us updates of everything that they're doing with the city of Nogales. I told them that would be very beneficial for all of us to see what's going on. He's fine with that starting in March. I know a couple of the council people said, why did we buy this building and we're not using it? Well, our goal is, and we've already chatted with this, certainly again with directors, about possibly getting in by the end of this year, utilizing the bank building as a department for business and possibly IT. But that's our goal is to get over there. We've got armory and I know we've got plans with that with the police force, certainly, and other goals on that, but I'll keep you posted. But a lot of this is what's going on, certainly. I'm meeting with our District One elected representative this Friday, Luis Carlos Davis. And like he said, I do represent Nogales. So, and I know the talk before I even got here was, why isn't the county not involved? He agrees. He's meeting with me. Mr. John Fanning is going to meet with me next week as well to discuss how we can work, especially for the library out in Rio Rico. We manage that library, what we can do and how we can work together. So I'm trying to get going with the county as well. And Jesus Valdez did reach out to me and we're trying to get a meeting going here in the next couple of weeks. I, with the last conference I went to, I met with the lobbyist for the school boards and she told me, she gave me the name of the person that does for the cities and communities across. And, and I'm going to meet with him when I go up to this next conference, a lobbyist, because I told him we need somebody for Nogales. If we're going to lead, well, we need somebody. I'll see what that is. Again, I'll see what he can do for us as far as the city of Nogales. A lot, a lot of information, right? Okay, I'm going as fast as I can. There's a grant system. We've all talked about grants. We do have money. Jean and I talked about this. Again, I'm going with Jean because she is the financial person. We, there is a grant system providing grants that we will sign up for. They'll be able to give us a one-page summary, whatever. We'll be able to work with that, going with that. The company that we're working with, with the chief and our IT is getting our security cameras up to date, working through a grant processes, getting our security systems up to date, getting our, all of our alarm systems, be it fire, security throughout the, the city of Nogales. So I'm looking at that with, with this, with the grants and I know that we're meeting, I believe, next week again. We've had various conversations. They came and did an audit of all of our buildings to tell us what we need, at least as far as that area goes. I'm working with, and I think Thomas, you met him, all those that we went to the grand opening. I, Thomas with Franklin Energy, he was at the Carney Asada at the grand opening for our new electric company. I look, I don't remember the name. Thank you. You're good on that. He is certainly working, Unisource was responsible, Unisource TEP and I believe SRP. The Corporation Commission gave directions that they need to have Franklin Energy working along with everyone. He will be coming down speaking, I believe, again. But he will work with us in getting with the, whatever energy company we got. I'm, right now I'm looking with McKinstry. They're a billion dollar operation. Pima County utilizes them as one of their energy companies. Looking at getting LED lighting in all of our buildings and streetlights. We already looked at how much it's costing us. I keep going to Jean because again, financial is the key here. But we're looking at what that's going to cost. And again, anything that's going to be, it's going to be hopefully grant based. But I'll bring everything to you and as well as installing, updating our heating and cooling units and getting solar shade parking as much as we can throughout the city. Our management, and I got this from Carmen, is our Southwest Risk Management. I've already reached out to them. They'll certainly help with whatever we need for onboarding our new employees. And that follows along with the safety position that you approved last council meeting. So we're certainly going to work on that. The last one is, and I've moved the administrative assistant for the city manager, I've added more bachelor's degree to it. As we were discussing as well, bachelor's degree and how bachelor's degrees certainly are important for all of us. But I moved that position because we need to work on our social media. The IT does not have somebody that does social media. And Jose and I are working on that and looking to see where we can get not only just social media, but we also, right now are paying for over twenty websites of software for the city of Nogales. So we're going to get our hand on this and get to where we're going, which department should be doing it, which departments probably are not. But again, we're going to move in that direction to start utilizing what we're paying for and make it a little more, the word I guess is work smarter, not harder. So hopefully we get that incorporated. And with that, I'm going to leave it because I'm, I know I've said a lot, but that's where we're at. I know that a lot of you, you know, my door is open, certainly. Saulu, I'll just give you, I asked you and you were certainly following it because you are sending me the emails when appropriate. Certainly Esther, Lisa, and each and every one of you, that's great because then I can forward that. But there is a program out there that we have in place where anybody in the community can take a picture and it should be sent to the right department. We're going to get that incorporated as well. So Saulu, you don't have to go back and take those pictures where you'll be able to just tell that person, hey, do it this way and it will go into the right departments. So that's part of the situation we're at. And thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for letting me bring on this, and thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Great job. Lots, lots to talk about and lots to look into. Future agenda items, Mr. Bonilla, Mr. Doyle. Ms. Melendez, Ms. Montiel. Ms. Parra, Vice Mayor. Basically, on, on PD, Mr. Jimenez, I know we've been, we've talked about it in the past, the body cams and all that. I don't know where you guys are at on that, you know. Think it got, they got approved, you know, a long time ago and you guys were looking into it, you know. Just give us a, a report on that or then Mr. Kramer, where we fall. Mr. Guerra, Nogales Rides. Where's my car? Okay, you know, been approved for a long time. Where, where do we fall with Nogales Ride's vehicle? I hate seeing Andy in loaners. And that's all I have. Anything else? Kramer, you have anything?
I'll just add that the current acting fire chief stated that they are, have been reached out from the state of California for the fires and that he may, we may be sending, like we have in the past. I believe the city of Nogales has done that. He said that it's not going to cost anything out of pocket. We actually gain from, by doing that financially. But of course, it's about helping your neighbors, correct? So I'll keep you posted. Whatever they decide to do, I said, I'll let the council know. But if that's the case, that may be coming in the next few days.
Yeah, I, I, he briefly mentioned it that to me. Great job, Ms. Urias. Thank you for doing that. Anything else? I move to adjourn this meeting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.